This meeting is to the order. And I just want to say that we're being killed tonight for everybody's information and stuff with the pledge of allegiance.
.................................................................................
So, we will start with superintendent's report. I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. Nice crowd in June.
So, under the superintendent's report, we're going to use a lot of our time for some great student recognition. And we are first going to recognize a group of students who participated in something called the, I'm forgetting the acronym, SIFMA?
Yeah.
SIFMA, Stock Market Game. And so, I'm going to introduce a couple of our teachers, and then they're going to help us introduce the kids. So, we have instructional technology specialist Mark Dogen from the Martha Jones School, and we have teacher Jeremy Wolfe from the Hanlon School. And go ahead, Mark. Okay, why don't you come up? Yeah.
All right. I'll stay at this side. Sure. Good evening, school committee, and administrators, and other guests. My name is Mark Dogen. I'm an instructional technology coach at Martha Jones and Paul Hanlon School. This year, I partnered with Mr. Robbie Bartlett, who's a fifth grade teacher at Martha Jones. He couldn't be here today. And Mr. Jeremy Wolfe, fourth grade teacher at Hanlon. We completed a series of lessons in financial literacy, and we participated in fall and spring sessions of the Stock Market Game. So, the Stock Market Game is an investing simulation where the students start with a hundred thousand dollars cash portfolio. They invest in stocks, bonds, and mutual funds for about 10 weeks. They trade in real time, and they pay 1 percent of commissions, and then see where things are after those 10 weeks. So, Mr. Wolfe and I are here today to announce and to recognize two groups of investors who were already acknowledged at Fidelity Investments in Boston last month. They stood up, made presentations in front of a packed house.
Wow.
So, I'm going to turn it over to school. We're going to introduce our Hanlon team first.
So, I have the honor to introduce our Hanlon team, Stock, Stampede, James Becken, Mick Ganson, and Benny Hallenhead, who unfortunately couldn't be with us tonight. And I'm just very impressed with these two boys, and Benny as well. And one of the main reasons why I'm impressed is because, as Mark said, we did a lot of handholding in our fall lessons. We would teach about once a week. We would do all the necessary lessons, teamwork, how to research appropriately. And then, in the spring, we let them go. And most of their trading happened outside of school, and we were merely consultants and facilitators. So, they did all the heavy work, and they raised about from a hundred thousand dollars, which they had to start, to over a hundred fourteen thousand. Go ahead.
So, they were the second-place team in Massachusetts for the spring session. So, on behalf of the Martha Jones School, I want to introduce two investors that called themselves the Boston Brokers, Mr. Dante Mariani and Mr. Stephen Zuthin. They started with a hundred thousand dollars. They ended with over a hundred nineteen thousand dollars in 10 weeks. So, that's a big return. And as a side note, during the fall session, they could have equally have been successful. They were in first place with about 10 days left, and the market took a nosedive in early December. And we all learned a valuable lesson, that sometimes when stocks are high, you need to sell. So, we have Dante and Stephen, first-place winners in Massachusetts, and they were awarded a banner for the school to hang up.
Nice job, boys. We'll take a picture with you guys, too. Boys, we also have certificates for you, and I'm going to, I'll just use you as Dante first, but it just said that the certificate is awarded to, in your case, Dante Mariani in recognition of your first-place finish, or in this case, a runner-up finish, in the 2016 SIFMA Foundation Stock Market Game. Congratulations from everybody here. You guys should be really proud of this. Take the banner off, yes. One, two, three. Show me the money. There you go. All right. One, two, three. Show me the money. There you go. We also have one other group of special guests here tonight, and I'm going to turn it over to Principal Allison Borshus from First and Middle School, who's going to introduce and talk a little bit about our eighth-grade Scholar Leader Award winners. Because I think it's our second annual, correct?
I think this is third.
Oh, so I'm losing track of time.
So, this is the third year that we've had the chance in front of school committee to honor four eighth-grade students who really exemplify Thurston's key to success, to aim high, work hard, do the right thing, and help someone else. It is a particular honor this year, I wanted to say, because this eighth-grade class has such an excellent reputation, that for a group of students to sort of rise to the surface from among a bunch of really great nominees is truly, truly an honor for them and for their families tonight. So, it's a great job, you guys. So, we're going to just, we'll do this good thing. The way the process works, Scholar Leaders are nominated by individual teachers and then selected by their teams for setting ambitious academic and personal goals, for dedicating themselves wholeheartedly to achieving those goals, for providing service to classmates and the school, for acting as a positive role model for their peers, and for demonstrating integrity, honesty, self-discipline, and courage, which I don't know how many of you remember middle school well, but sometimes that's what it takes. I'm going to note who this year's winners are. I told them I would let them sit in the audience while we talk about them, so they don't have to stand here awkwardly with us. And then, we'll invite them up at the end for a plaque. So, this evening, we have Nahal Magalav. We have Devin Bellevue. We have Alexa Melman, and Olivia Malkinson. We have two of their teachers here tonight, just to say a couple individual words about them, and to let you get to know a little bit about what got them this award in the first place. So, Mr. Frankidfield from the red team, and Mr. Studdard from the blue team are going to come join me up here, just to talk about how awesome you guys are in a little more detail.
So, your blue team teachers, Nahal and Alexa, came up with some phrases and words to describe what you exhibited and shown to them over the year. So, Nahal is a young man that thinks before he speaks. That's huge. Thoughtful, always completes his work, will volunteer in class, is enthusiastic, has a great sense of humor, is polite, is mature, willing to take on challenging work, and willing to work with all of his peers. Every day, he makes a point to say hello and ask how you are, and he even does it in French. You are a leader for the rest of your class, and you lead by example. Alexa is a young lady. You'll probably forget which teacher this is. Did more Gusto points than any other student. Takes on challenging work consistently, has a quiet presence. Peers will turn to ask her for help quietly, behind the scenes, and you don't recognize that. You are a sweetheart, so willing to help. You quietly lead. You're never unkind, a sophisticated learner. You have a love of learning. You go above and beyond. Your knowledge of politics and current events is impressive. Doesn't rise to the occasion, she creates a whole new occasion. We wish her well in her move to an academy. You're going next.
I don't have that much love. But I have, I have a lot of good stuff. For the red team, Devin and Olivia, same themes keep, you know, keep coming through, and they pretty much are the three pieces of success that we're talking about. Work hard, work hard, work hard. That's pretty much what it says. Like, these two kids work really, really hard. Then also talks about how your love of learning will be. I know you chose a book for social studies. It was a little off over your head. Tough book, but you stuck with it, and I appreciated that. And Devin, he just keeps on trucking along, doing what he does. I guess in closing, I think the best thing I've read here was collaboration. We have these new Chromebooks. We work collaboratively, and a lot of these things now, Devin creates study guides for various tests, apparently mine included, and shares them willingly. Now, there were big kids in the past trying to charge for them. Devin has them. He just puts them out there. They seem to be working pretty well. And the sharing of what he's got, and the collaboration, having kids kind of amend them when they need some help, it just speaks beautifully to your cooperative. Interestingly, Olivia, you know what I learned today? You were Devin's partner on the bridge project. Is that correct? Some more collaboration here. These two guys have worked together in three of Chubby Testa yet? How did you do? I would guess so. So, congratulations for the red team. Thank you.
Your group, Superintendent Intimity, helped me with plaques, and have you guys come up to this point, and we can give you a wonderful plaque. If you're going to break these out, we'll tell you what they say. So, I'll show you. Alexa, for example, says, "Presented to Alexa Melman in recognition of being named Thurston Mill School Scholar Leader for the 2015-2016 school year." And in addition, your names actually go on a plaque that hangs in our office every day, so people walk by. If you ever want to come by, we actually have been doing this program this way for a couple of years, but we work through a larger organization for many years, so you can actually see past luminaries from like 10, 15 years ago. You are now in sort of the group of really, really awesome kids, so congratulations again. Come on up, and get this distributed. Maybe if this jowdy wanted to join us.
Oh, no. The moms and dads and guests don't feel bad getting up in the hurry up. You're all looking at each other, sure.
Yeah, thanks so much for coming.
Oh, yeah, grab some cookies on the way out. There we go. There we go.
Hey, look at it.
I'm so excited that we have a full house.
You don't have to be excited.
This is more what we're used to.
Anyway, okay. Go ahead.
So, just two quick things. I remember it's got a little, not a date, but in your packet, you had the third quarter financial report. We missed it last month. I just, general, I'll give it the fiscal year is over in a couple of weeks. We are doing very well, and we're very strong. Q3 was strong, Q4 is equally as strong, so there's really no news. I just wanted to make sure that it landed before you. And then, the final thing is, I don't really have much of updates, basic capital need study update, other than Joseph and I and Keith have been in some preliminary conversations with an owners' project manager, somebody who's very experienced, not only statewide and nationally doing large construction projects, but also locally, right here in Westwood. And so, we're talking a little bit with him to see how he might be able to help us, you know, moving forward. And I'm actually pretty certain that he can help us greatly. And so, the next few weeks, we'll kind of sort out what those services might look like, and I'll come before you, pretty quickly, you know, recommendation.
So, the general idea of what we're just...
I mean, he could help facilitate the entire process. You know, it's helping us develop criteria, helping us focus groups.
Helping us to focus.
Yeah, I mean, it's really, I think it's, it can help us facilitate the entire review, all the way, you know, liaison with MSBA, all the way theoretically through design and ultimately construction. But right now, it's just about how can we, how can you help us get off the ground, if that makes sense.
Do we know how much money might be available at some time in the town to take on debt?
That's, that's a question I don't have, I don't know yet, yet, Charlie.
We asked them to say what are the parameters, five years, 10 years, 10 years from now, what is potentially available without overrides or anything like that, which is we would have a ballpark idea of what that number might be.
We have to, yeah.
Yeah, I think that probably would be something we would have a conversation with maybe PM sometime after we meet with the consultants and get a better sense of what we're doing, right?
The consultant might want to know that, too.
Yeah. Absolutely.
That's superintendent's report.
Okay. All right. So, now, we've got a couple of participation. Is there anything that's currently on the agenda that you'd like to talk about? And if you would, identify yourself when you stand up. Thank you, Kendra.
Kendra Lass, and now you are doing a ring. What about the space capital need study? The new proposals that were presented a couple of months ago, when will they be put on the website? What's on there now is ones from April of last year?
Let me go, let me go with that.
Okay.
I literally thought they were up there, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Anybody else? Yes.
Peter, reporting on Ellis Street. Can I talk about the...
Absolutely, Peter. We'd be disappointed if you didn't.
I very much encourage you to support putting solar panels on the school for four reasons. One is, I think there's basically minimal risk to the school. Number two, no capital expense upfront. Number three, it'll generate significant savings on your electric bill. Number four, it has real educational value. I think it'd be great for the kids to be exposed to solar. And the deal that's proposed includes curriculum to teach kids about solar. There'll be a kiosk where the kids can see the, I'll put up the panels. I think it fits in with educating kids about climate change, CO2 emissions, things like that. And to the five reasons. The fifth reason is it'll cut our CO2 emissions considerably. So, I really encourage you to support this, and also to act on it today, so that we can get it in by January 8th or whenever. That's right. That's right, Bill.
Thank you for your comments. Yes.
Hi, many who sent me to 57 Road. I live in Westwood for about 20 years. I moved there out of school. We just import solar panels in our house, and we just want to have, I think, really second tier clean accommodations. This is a great project. We're so lucky to have thought building, you know, working with who knows a lot, and has gotten this, this project going. And it just serves so many purposes, communication, the environmental, the financial. It's a win-win situation. So, I hope you consider it.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Hi, Claire Galcowski, 320 Dover Road. I'd like to third under comment. We just put 10 kilowatts on our house, and the electric company owes us money. So, I think I would like to see our town, you know, take this opportunity to reduce our energy budget, both in money and emissions. Yes.
Young Galcowski, 320 Dover Road, First Westwood. I think it's important to appreciate that this is a very, very unique time in the Commonwealth, and in fact, the world. I mean, set aside for a moment the whole climate change or the need to comply with the global warming solution, that the, the energy industry, and notably, electric power in the United States, whether it likes it or not, is about to undergo a tremendous revolution. There are people at financial services organizations like Goldenberg and, and the Financial Times that talk about in 30 years, there being no fossil fuel-driven energy anywhere, simply because it would be, it's stupid for businesses to do anything else. So, we're basically poised at a, at a complete change. And it's basically whether people like it or not, that's the way it's going to happen, because the, the energy from solar and technologies that are associated with it are just going to undercut everything else. So, so it's a question of whether you do it now or whether you do it later. And, and it would be nice, as I think of Westwood, particularly Westwood Schools, which are excellent as, as demonstrating some leadership in this area, and particularly the kind of curriculum things that Peter talked about. I think it's, it's really important to excite the kids about this kind of technology and to get them ready for the future that will be here. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. On to our next discussion items.
So, I would just say, I appreciate everybody's comments, but I just want the committee to realize, we don't, we don't know what we're being asked to support. And I just wanted to frame this, and I'm thrilled that we're here tonight to hear a presentation. But the school committee's involvement in this project so far has been to hear sort of a concept about putting solar's on schools. That happened, I think, maybe a year, a year ago. And we haven't really had, the committee hasn't had any conversations since. We're really excited tonight to hear, hear from the team about what this might look like, but the committee doesn't have anything in front to act on yet. So, I just want to make sure that we're, we might, the committee, that's where we are, and also, also the public. With that, I'll say, we do have Tom Philbin here, who's a community major from the town. And I see Mike Gillette up there. Mike, thanks for coming. And Tom, I'm going to have you maybe introduce the team and launch this, and then we'll get rolling.
Sure. About a year ago, you pointed out, we had our first efforts toward looking at solar for a lot of reasons, just to get off the ground. Now, we did put out an RFQ, request for proposal. That was about six months ago now. We had about five or six responses from the companies, and what we did is, we had a team, and we evaluated the responses, and tried to find which one was the most qualified, which had the most experience, and say, Massachusetts in particular, and which had done a lot of school. With that, we did choose Amarestco. Amarestco is a company that's located in Framingham. Everyone I spoke to in the other communities, we have these meetings with the energy managers on a twice-year basis, and during these meetings, we discuss the various contractors. And to their credit, Amarestco gets very high marks by everything. So, we chose Amarestco to be the one to lead us in this effort. And I'll turn it over now to Jim Redden, who's a people manager. Jim, we'll give you a little rundown on what they're pulling into the town.
Yes, I have a question.
Yes.
Another few things. This is a snapshot of the current room, it's like a menu, the different frequencies that we offer. Will Jackson pass that out? These are all little props, just a preliminary location.
First, I'd like to say, I'm a little disappointed to be released, is it the Stock Market? Because I was hoping to grab them in a few minutes, just to catch up, because I'm having fun. I figured I'd catch up in a parking lot. My name's Mike Backus. I'm a principal at Amarestco. We started the company back in 2000. With me today is Jack Arndt, manager of development. Josh Parabu, who heads up All-Issure, is in the east coast, actually east coast of Mississippi. And Jim Redden, who's vice president of energy assets. I'll be honest with you, I did not know about this project until close to winter. And Jim said, came up to me, Jim Redden, a Bedford resident, you won't hold against me. And he said, hey, don't you live in Westwood? I go, yeah. And he said, we just want a project. And I'm glad to be aware of it. So, I've asked him to be part of the team, because A, I've been a resident for over 31 years now, and I want to make sure anything we do here was a marquee event. B, it has to do with schools, and I got two children in the schools, one which is up in the back of their alley, and I'm worried they're disappointed if we do something that is not the best grade. So, a little bit of what I've company, was three of us started the company up on a contract out, it was like Joe's American Bar and Grill in Dedham back in 99. We, our CEO was our angel money. He floated the company with myself and one other. And we've grown it now to actually 100,000. And we took the company public in 2010. What we locked up on, focused on was creating a company with a niche that had no allegiance or, had no unbiased, or bias to business. We didn't want to be part of utilities. We didn't want to be part of an oil company. We want to be independent energy services company, that would look at end customers, say, what's the best fit you could. So, beyond solar, we developed a number of other types of renewable energy projects. At Westwood, solar was the best opportunity that we could see. Lucky enough, your folks have put up an RFQ. We've implemented over $5 million of energy projects around the world, so a front of which locally has been solar. I think we've developed now 34-plus megawatts in Massachusetts alone. Your project represents about 2% of that, so this isn't our first time in the world yet. Nationally, we've got hundreds of megawatts of these type of projects. Mostly missed out, and what Jackson talked a little bit about is, why it's a nice fit for the community is that we take the risk out. We put up our own capital. Now, I asked for the taxpayer to put up the capital. And the end result is, you save money. So, taking my Amarestco hat off for a minute, now, as a taxpayer of Westwood, or any company of that matter, if someone is able to put up the capital, take the risk, and my energy costs go down, it's not bad here. And it's not, I know there's no such thing as a free lunch. This isn't a free lunch. We're essentially displacing utility costs. So, the, at the end of the day, Amarestco is the one that, the old boss in Edison, that will get less revenue from you folks. And as you see in some of the residential cases, they end up paying the residents. So, I'm going to, Jack will talk about some projects we've done, and your project specifically, but we just wrapped up a half-pack recently, a high school, Braintree High School, the same type of project you see on here, Laxton Tenon. A lot of school districts implement these projects because they have this empty space on the rooftop that's just, could add value to the town. Another phase of this project not to be discussed here today, because as Jack will explain, where the Commonwealth is right now legislatively, what we're proposing, it's a fit. But another thing that we see a lot of schools doing is campings, which essentially go in the parking lot. The advantage of those projects is that it acts, not only to generate energy, free energy for the town, but in the winter, at this place, it's not a place with crowds park, and in the sun, it acts almost like that. So, we see a lot of universities, and hospitals, and high schools doing that as well. So, with that, I'll let Jack, I'll take it over to explain a little bit about the project.
Thanks, sir. I'm Jack Arndt. I, if the town goes forward with the project, I'll be managing it day to day. Let's talk a little bit about the program for town. So, we're proposing this program, of which phase one, whatever you talked to me about today. Phase one is for school, maybe a couple of other buildings that we're going to talk to Tom about that are not school in the town. The program benefits, like Mike said, we're providing savings on your utility bills, pretty significant, and I'll get into it in a second. No upfront cost, because we use our own capital. There's no upfront. There's no operational risk. You know, something breaks, kid hits a baseball, hits one of those solar panels, we're up there fixing it. If it's snowy, and there's no producing power, you don't pay for the power. There's no operational risk. We do a lot of curriculum support. We have lesson plans for every grade, and, and it really covers energy comprehensively enough, just so. So, the students are really going to benefit from this type of banner, like I said, being able to see a kiosk, being able to do lesson plans about systems on your own to school. It's really beneficial. We see why schools do it. And then, not to leave it till the last, but it's very important, is to reduce your greenhouse gas emissions, you know, help the environment. So, the four projects we're proposing are high school, Thurston Mill School, Downey, and Martha Jones. The system capacity is right there. That's its maximum output capacity. And then, here you can see the energy cost savings in year one, as based on current utility rates, and then the 20-year energy cost savings, that's kind of projected, generally speaking, it's been fairly accurate for our projects that we're doing. We mentioned a lot of other schools recently. This is just a snapshot of some of the ones that have gone live recently, and you can see a number of them we've done for our clients, and some of them were in this area, some in other parts of the... in other parts of Massachusetts. And we just finished Arlington in two thousand and fifteen, this snapshot of our construction team. So the construction is actually fairly minimal. We're not tearing apart your building, we're not going to disrupt classrooms. You've got a test, you've got a testing day, we'll stop work. We'll do our, we lift equipment to the roofs, we'll do that on Saturday so we don't have cranes disrupting your, your school operations. We work with the roof manufacturers to make sure that the marties under roofs are maintained when we do this and there's no issues. And a lot of you are probably thinking about visual impact, you might get C's. Typically, they're not visible. They're very low profile. That's a snapshot of it last week. And as you can see, there's solar panels all over it, but you can barely see them from the street. They're really low profile, they only stick up about six, eight inches off of the roof. We talked about a schedule and some citizens have mentioned the January eighth date and that's something that we're working with in Massachusetts Legislature. There's currently a really beneficial program right now and if we can get this constructed by January eighth, the savings are greater than if we were to postpone. So that's why we're trying to make an effort to get these underway quickly so we can provide the school with more savings.
Just to jump in on the Jack, so that's out of our control and it's just an unfortunate situation that not just this town, but a lot of communities are in. Legislatively, they attempt us to promulgate the implementation of solar. But at some point in time, the power plant's starting decreasing subsidies available for these type of projects. So SREC two program is the way we are able to subsidize the project to make it economic so you save money. So as Jack had showed you, a hundred and forty-three thousand a year in savings. So you put up no capital, you save about a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars a year. If we miss the dates, which is out of our control, that materially drops because the next tier, SREC three program will come out, will be much less lucrative than what's out there today. And it's just the nature of the piece. There are a lot of municipalities and private clients, we have a private health, we have a big project in, at, something, some of them. And they have nine other hospitals they want us to do. The problem is there's no way we can get it done in time to keep the program. So now we go wait and see what program is and we already know what program's going to be, less lucrative. God bless us.
Can I ask why you waited until June to come to us?
We did and we just selected for the RFQ, so we're here as soon as we're allowed to come.
The answer's that's.
I do take, I will take blame as the resident of the town, I think I'd be, I'm not going to come talk to you guys early, but yeah, I'm usually on a plane and everyone puts two and two together. I should have probably come talk to you, Tom, just as a taxpayer, to get a tax in there.
And Mike, there was also one, they actually extended SREC two. It would have ended earlier, but they extended it. And the SREC two does pay a higher incentive and therefore when this extension came out, it was around the time that we were selected under the RFQ. And so we talked to Tom, we talked to the group, we said, "You know, we've got barely enough time. If you think if you want, then try to push forward." So we can, you do not want to rush anybody in town, but we're trying to get everything ready, there is time to make a decision. It would be more profitable for the town to do it in the first round than the second round. It's still working the second round, but it's hope it is lucrative to the town. Where, you guys might drive around Pike, you see all the signs everywhere, we want all the solar panels. You'll see that's another round of things we want to do, but.
So what's, what's dropped today?
In order, in order, I know as crazy as this sounds, this is scheduled, we need to be able to get on permits in places where I want to. So we actually need to get, and Tom, I think you have a copy of the agreements for who you need signed with that. We need to have those things signed with you.
Can I ask a question that we asked like a year ago, I can't get it, but this is a twenty-year commitment? That makes me really nervous and I, I'm just, I mean, help me with that.
Yeah, so well, it's easy. In order for us to reduce the cost as much as possible to you on a unit basis, getting the price across over as many years as we can. So I get, you know, I'll go offline, I've got a project with Anne Heiser Bush that's not sold, with a type of project and they want it in eight years. So we can do it in eight years, but their rate is not rocket science, right? So we have to invest this amount of capital, we have to amortize those costs and if the client wants it in the short term, we need to get higher rates from them over that short term they can work. Municipalities, buying municipalities, higher ed and health, and healthcare are great clients and they typically have long-term horizon. So universities and hospitals and towns like Westwood, they've, they've been here for X number of years, they expect to be here many more years. They don't probably look at long-term, it allows us to amortize the costs and reduce it to compete with the electric rate.
Mike, I'm sure it was about technology.
Well, that's why I was going to ask.
Twenty years of technology is like a thousand years. I mean, it really, with your lock-in.
They're designed for, they're designed for a thirty-year life. And in fact, even the solar panels that were on the White House in the seventies that Jimmy Carter, they still work.
They work, but is there, isn't there a better technology?
So the issue with that is you can keep waiting. I mean, I, so you save almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So let's say in seven years, there's a better technology, you forfeit a million dollars, maybe save a hundred grand or something. I hear you. I mean, I, I'm in the, I thought about that first, you know, how things do for my own living more. But the reality is, is that, you know, our private clients and industrial clients look at it and say, "All right, you know, it's a burning hand, we're going to run with it." And if technology comes out that just all of a sudden allows us to go back and change it out, put something new because the economics makes sense, you always have that ability to do that.
If I can just add a couple of statistics to hopefully get you comfortable with, I'm a numbers guy, to help you get comfortable with both of those issues. From a, from a risk management perspective, we are so, we are proposing a power purchase agreement so far below what you're currently paying for electricity that that gives us and our, our collective clients across the country comfort that, yes, they are signing a long-term agreement, but if you're, so the, the rate we propose somewhere, we think it can be around ten cents depending on the final engineering drawings look like, final cell treatments, et cetera. The town is currently paying, we believe somewhere around seventeen, eighteen, nineteen cents per kilowatt hour. So there's a very large gap and that gap, that gap doesn't change over time. We believe that the existing utility rates escalate at the same rate or lower or higher than what our contract will escalate at.
So what's our escalator rate?
I think we're estimated two percent.
So if you go back to the EIA, which is a federal government standard, they, they do an analysis on utility rates. And you go over, say, thirty-plus years, you have the anomalies that they have. The average utility costing rate is three and a half percent nationally. Now, obviously in some places, in northeast for example, it's high, but generally it's three and a half percent. So, you know, I'm not a fortunate fellow, but it's likely the utility rates will go long term, will go up. And this will help mitigate some of that risk.
And again, the key is that large delta. It's not that we're saving you one cent off of whatever that number is, it'd be sixty percent or so.
I think I, the other thing I would say is, so we've implemented some of these projects for some of the most astute buyers in the industry, has a permanent deal in the west coast of a hundred and one to this time, as savvy as they come. There's a lot of analysis that's been done by people above the expects more than us and they're doing it because again, it's, they look at it and like, you know what, no matter what, over the next seven, ten years, I'm going to save seven figures and we can reevaluate and handle that.
You go ahead.
So, Carol, so what happens where we are looking to the future of our schools and making some decisions, we're unsure what the final decisions will be. What happens if one of those schools, either we renovate it or we put it out of commission, whatever it is? What then if we have panels on there? And we go and we have a new school or, or how's that?
Yeah, so I will say this, if you think, Braintree, Braintree is great example. So Braintree had a, it was a middle school, we ended up doing a high school, we did a middle school too. And Braintree said, "You know what, here's the challenge, we've got, we've got applications into the state to subsidize a HAC project, you know, replace all their units of roof." They had no idea where this would go. And we all made the decision, well, that's going to happen in the next few years again. Let's just leave it, you have to be careful with rest at that time. What I would say is, you know, you want to pick locations that you think won't likely have an issue over the long term. That being said, your contract does allow for the panels to have downtime and you to be able to do things like that.
Can you transfer them to another school?
If you could set us up, you would have to cover the cost of that. Tom would have to, obviously, you know, we're not going to. When we, so when we lock in the project with you, we're kind of at base. So now to go spend any money five years from now to move the ground to school, we can, but you guys have to cover the cost of that.
Even if, even if we were, I mean, I think as the, isn't Downey one of those schools that we're talking about? Yeah, so if Downey, if we're going to add to that school, which is one of the plans that we're talking about.
Well, adding is not a problem.
Yeah, adding is not a problem.
But one of the main issues is you've got to put those panels on a brand new roof. Because most roofs are like twenty to twenty-five year life.
Yeah, no, it's a brand new roof. From what we would do, we tried it, but I think we're hoping to get it Monday. We actually have a structural, we put panels on roofs that, you know, hold.
No, I know, but in, in your twenty-year lifespan, we're going to be replacing that roof.
You'll have the ability to do that under the contract. There's very much downtime, right? But they're allowed to.
So who, who pays for that, Tom?
If you guys take the system down, you guys pay for having it removed and put back up.
Give me, give me an order of magnitude on that.
It's, it's pretty small. It's, it's far less than you're saving per year. It's basically a construction group for a couple of weeks to do everything. It's probably, it's measured in, let's call it, the tens of thousands compared to three million dollars.
Yeah, you have most of the money in town. The other way to look at it is if you're saving eight cents and you got to do it, take the half a cent off and save it, but you're still saving the other seven. So there are, actually, you, the other thing I was just going to say is if you're saving a hundred and fifty thousand a year, you expect to do something like that in year five, you've saved seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Has, have the town, has the town had the same issues on some of their buildings raised?
Same question with Mike? Well, we can pronounce. We are, well, some of the buildings, we've hopefully got to do it first anyway. The fire station, the new fire station is being designed actually to be solar-ready as well as a police station.
But those are new buildings, so.
They're new buildings, but I mean, they're actually going to the extreme of putting in connections and solar in advance. And then when we looked at some of the other buildings, I mean, it's rarely that you will get an opportunity where for no money out of pocket, you will essentially bring in hundreds of thousands of dollars to the school system over a period of time. And all of that becomes leveraged. The other reference that we have where at Downey and at Martha Jones, we would be replacing all of the lighting inside with LEDs, you know, with LED light, which will cut the consumption and give a larger surplus of, of electricity to be used and money to be used elsewhere. We're going to have our structural on here, what are the roofs? And if something happens, it's our liability under our insurance. So we're out there.
But you mentioned August has to be a permit, the date you need the permit's filed to receive.
Yes, right now.
And if you were to receive a decision from us, when does that have to be for you to go start filing?
Yes, what we would do, yes, in good faith, if the school committee gave a green light to the town, we'd like it, let's do it. So that's a process just to get the contracts negotiated and signed. And I would in good faith spend our money at risk to stop the permitting process. Because we don't want to, you can't wait.
But when do you need to know a decision by us if we were to make a decision?
Yeah, two thirty is where we're at.
Two thirty.
We would need contracts, if not placed, and post.
If you do this project, but we're just for one school, so it's just for the high school. You don't have to have all the other schools necessarily in this respect.
Well, you have all the schools. Now, with the, the, Downey and Martha Jones have the best opportunities to generate a percent of their consumption that it would be generating. The high school is oriented, not ideally, there's a smaller piece of the high school that's.
No, if we're just the high school, you wouldn't want to do it yourself.
No, I don't want to rule that out. I'd like to go back and look at it.
A good ninety-eight kilowatts.
Yeah, we would go back, I think, you know, we'll figure out tomorrow. You guys sit the night in looking at it just as a high school.
You know, it's not that we, we don't think this is a good idea, it's just that it's June sixteen and we need a decision right away. It's a big decision to make. I know some of you don't think that is a big decision, but it is. Because we don't know what we're doing with the builders. I, I would suggest that maybe we should say the high school, we could do it at the high school, but I'm not comfortable with the other space. Because we don't know what we're doing.
Can I add one?
Yeah, sure.
I've done a lot of the sort of fieldwork.
Sure.
All the rooms that we're looking at are in good shape when you look at them and they've been redone. The oldest one, they're about ten years old. But the way that the PPR contract works with the, the energy, if you want us to build in a roof replacement, we can do that right now. And then you'd be guaranteed to have a roof replacement. Instead of being ten cents, it might be eleven, it might be eleven cents.
Not now where some schools.
You can definitely build it in if you want, but usually towns don't want to do that because it's cheaper to wait the fifteen years to then find out, gee, it's going to cost me fifty thousand dollars. But it's totally an option to build in a roof replacement into the price in advance. And therefore, if you have a couple of schools that say, "We know we're going to do a roof replacement," and we'll build it in, and then the other ones, we won't. But all this stuff, this stuff is, a lot of people are doing this all the time, so it's going to be.
Keep something in mind about Amaresco as well, solar is one facet. Our biggest business is actually owner to schools and rental buildings and new clients here for that's all schools in session. Up in High Park, New York, while kids were in classes and now you're committed to replace blocks and windows, so all other systems. Province, we've got province schools up, running a debt of money with temporary blows and sort of replacements. So we're very understanding as to the challenges of working in the school and education.
Is there anything in your contract that adjusts for the technology? You know, the Chinese are making these things like for nothing and, I mean, so let's say ten years into a whole new revolution and we've forgotten how much gets generated by everything we have here. Are we locked into these rates before it is or could there be an adjustment made of the technology change?
Yeah, the deal's big, but what we have done non-solar other type of projects for two years and in ten years, equipment and efficiency and costs are completely different and much more attractive. We can come back to you, it's almost a refinancing. It's like, so we could present to you a new project that could replace the old project. The economics would have to work for it, obviously, but if that, if that's something.
Every contract has a schedule of buyouts or termination values and it feels, it feels just like your cell phone plan. You know, after a year, Sprint wants to pay you the buyout of the contract to get you to switch. That's entirely possible. So personally, I don't believe that's the case with solar technology. Again, to finish answering the question, solar, the Jimmy Carter solar cells thirty years ago were somewhere around twelve percent efficient. Thirty years later, we're around sort of sixteen, seventeen percent efficient. The, the cost has come down significantly, a lot of, a lot of the digital process improvements and overseas manufacturing, it hasn't been on the technology side.
So it's like, because I would just say I'm centered because like lighting, right? Lighting changes every day.
Yeah. So the LED cost, the LED technology curve has approximated that Moore's Law, semiconductor curve. Solar, the cost has, but not the technology.
But see if it's fourteen, fifteen.
Fourteen, fifteen.
Fourteen, fifteen percent and back then it was twelve. So it hasn't changed that much. Meanwhile, you get a lot of savings on the panel.
So is it cap port ideas? Are there any schools that have done cap ports in the hogging?
We're not currently.
We're not proposing cap port, yeah, because the reason why only is, is no way we'd get the product in time to make this SREC round. SREC three, when it comes out, we'll do an evaluation, present you that. The economics not going to look as good, but we'll still present it.
But the answer is yes.
You've done it for school systems.
For school systems and we're doing it right now on top of a parking garage on AA Circle, we've done it. You know, the, the biggest thing I'd say is, and I'm a big supporter of renewable energy technologies, that's what I do. The one thing that scares me about solar is that solar on like a base load plant, like a power plant, basically supplying your energy, that runs twenty-four, seven. Solaring works fourteen percent of the time. So the economics can be challenging. Subsidies are there to help make it attractive for customers to want to do it, to get more people to do it. As these programs come on, especially depends on the administration, our current administration is slowly weaning us off the subsidies, then the economics get worse.
Yeah, the biggest risk, the biggest risk is definitely on the policy side, not the technology side. So the, the two major pieces that work in Massachusetts, Massachusetts, I was just in So the two major pieces that work in Massachusetts, Massachusetts, I was just in Washington, easy talking to the Massachusetts representatives. We already, so I always just express my hand, Massachusetts employs fifteen thousand people just in the solar industry alone. Massachusetts is, I don't know the number of economy, but it's the fourth largest state in terms of solar adoption. And as we all know, it's about the sunniest, driest place in the world. And the reason Massachusetts has so much solar is because there's very generous, what's called net metering credits, meaning the utility right now, Eversource, is paying the solar owners twenty-five cents per kilowatt hour for their power. And they're fighting that pretty significantly, as you can imagine, because that's a whole lot more than their avoided cost. We have very good reads into the legislative sessions and the public utilities commissions, and they're fighting that, and that's not gonna last forever. As a matter of fact, in the private sector, not the public sector, that's already been cut by forty percent. So that's one major risk that we don't, that we would recommend. The other piece is the SREC piece. That's a cash subsidy for solar owners. I'm sure our homeowners are benefiting greatly from that. That is a cash subsidy in the amount of twenty-eight cents right now per kilowatt hour. So you can add those two together, you're getting, collectively, we're all collectively getting that, let's call it fifty-odd cent benefit, which pays for our capital, allows your savings, et cetera. That also, as Mike was mentioning, I think we've all mentioned at some point, that's changing. Again, utilities are fighting that, and we know next year that number will be lower.
I think that's both talked about, of these programs is that there's no cap overs.
Right.
So you put them, you get savings.
I'd like to know how the town is dealing with this. Have you decided to put them on all of your buildings, or?
Yes, every, every one that we can, the plan is, sort of, the council's. The plan to do on the DPW, the buildings over there, the fire station. We'll probably try and see what we can do with the new police station. Any building that we can.
How about town hall?
Town hall, yes, whatever, wherever we can, the back is probably, we're gonna do it over the senior center. Every municipality, we've done, branchers, for example, we did a project in Branchers in Atlanta. And, yeah, and the mayor, Solomon, it was such a great deal for them, and they liked him, and he said, I'm gonna look at my schools. So he just got finished his high school. And he, his goals, they have on every town, building, school, so.
Mike, we're Tom, I'm gonna put you on the spot, I apologize. But if someone came to my house on June sixteenth and asked me to put solar on my shed by June thirtieth, I'm not sure I would say yes. So, the questions here are, it's real anxiety. I mean, we're asking for, and no offense to you guys, no. We're asking for a major decision by a board without having anything presented really before tonight. So I just need you to help me and us process these risks that we're talking about. I mean, I don't, we don't wanna be in a situation as a school department, five years from now, for lack of a better term, holding the bag on a bad roof or a significant cost that we can't afford. You know, budget process around here are not the easiest things, if anybody has seen how it goes. We don't have extra money to be making risks. And so I just wanna hear from you, do you think it's risky? Do you not? I really like, I'd like to hear from you, like, your recommendation.
I'd also like to hear from the committee as to what you all, Tony, you haven't said anything.
I'd like to just say one more.
I answered it, but.
Just one more thing that maybe you answered, because there was a question you asked, if we just sell the school, if we shut it down for a couple of years and repurpose it.
Right.
As long as the town itself has the electric load, it doesn't have to necessarily go to the school. It's a pay-for-transact. That's a benefit that with net metering, you can control. So let's say, for example, I'm just gonna use the Sheen School as an example. Let's say we put solar panels in the Sheen School. And down the road, the town says, no, we're gonna repurpose it into a rec yard. But the town has need for solar, but the town's electric load has a need elsewhere. That's okay. Electricity, and it's all virtual, it's all virtual net metering. It goes net against your total consumer. Your challenge would be is, hey, we're selling the Sheen School. And that's also private developer that's gonna go to your plan. Then that's an issue. Unless you give us some place we can take those panels and put them up.
But that's been, I think the, I don't know if it's Mass Association of Realtors has raised that issue, as an issue with residential, that when you go to sell your house, if they don't want the panels, or they're gonna do something to raise the roof or something, the new buyer is liable for twenty years. That's not the same in municipal buildings, but it could be if we, if you sold the Sheen School, I mean, that could be an issue.
But there's a termination value, so, and I've run into this one of the projects. The developer comes in, how does it purchase, is to pay the termination value to get out of that money. You'll have a schedule of values, you know, maybe.
Right.
What, so, I mean, we've had that happen on some other local projects. A landfill, for example, the developer wants to come in, excavate the landfill, and, and put a, a scene. And so the developer looks down and says, all right, it's X money to all buyouts, they filled in with the developer part. So that, that would be available. Look, I, I think if you think there's a school that is subject to clo, I don't wanna say closure, but selling it in the next few years, you gotta, go through it. But if, in the case of the high school, for example, a school like that, that's likely gonna be here for a while.
Right.
I think the town actually was, I mean, I think they're very thoughtful, actually, in the phase one schools.
Because those are.
Well, 'cause, you know, it's high school Thurston, Downey, Martha Jones, I mean, I don't think that was, that was by design. I think it was very thoughtful.
Right, I would be more concerned, I would say, you know, both of the high school, for sure. I, I'm concerned about the middle school, because right now, the way the conversation's going too, you hear a lot of people talking about, oh, you guys are dealing with the elementary schools, what about the middle school? You gotta do something. So we haven't made any decisions on the project, we don't know where we're going with it. So I would be hesitant to say, yeah, let's put them on the middle school.
Do you expect the middle school to be, unfortunately, expect it to be twenty pounds?
No. The cost to remove panels and put it back on is less than you save in one year. So even if we do it for one year, and then next year you decide to renovate the middle school, we gotta take them all off and put them back on. You still admit you're still, you haven't lost.
I think the challenge becomes if you sell the school or if you're gonna rip it down and not bring them on.
We have to put them in the middle school.
I think we should take some comfort from the fact that we're by far and away not the first of the schools to do this. There are, we're probably twenty, thirty, a lot of major towns have gone.
But Medfield didn't do it.
Medfield, Medfield is a, Dr. Gray's already.
And we talked about this before.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim is a resident.
Guys, guys, we got like three conversations going, hold on a second.
Mr. Philbin.
No, I was just saying that there are at least, when I sit at these meetings and I hear what all the other town was doing, and we're by far and away behind them, behind what most of the town are doing.
Small snap.
They all look at it as, it's found money. It does, you can almost look at it as a paying for a teacher. And as you leverage it with some of the other things that we're trying to do by reducing the energy, you're leveraging all of this even further. So it's a, I, yesterday, sat through a half hour presentation about how the Boston Medical Center was essentially saved by the combination of energy efficiency and solar that they put in. So it's, it's now, it was there, and I think the risk is very minimal going forward.
I also, um, the software side, children's school, I'm agreeing. Realize you do. I don't want to discount the educational positive. You know, on what the kids learn, from the reactor standpoint, it sets up, but actually, I mean, we can teach the kids, we can give programs to educate the teachers' abilities. I personally actually give education at universities, Boston University, Massachusetts University, Arizona State Building University. A huge sustainability program. Just to get on my high glass from the, what I would tell you is that the next wave of amazing curriculum, B U just, I think, is, is a line with the stewardship sustainability. And I think it's great to teach the kids at this level, get them acclimated, because it's here to stay. And it's a growing industry, we prove it. When you get three guys that start something that's grown, it's almost a billion dollar company, just to show the time. The industry is amazing, and I think we could do a really cool job, as well as, I don't know, participate.
Hey, no, we had this, I'm sorry. I know we had this discussion briefly, and I, because I wanna thank Tom for all the time he put into this. Looking, I feel a lot more confident with the time you've spent, been looking into it, and you'll have to, so, number one, thanks a lot, it's, we're not brand new to this. I do feel a little awkward that this twenty-three school district's already done this with no real bad repercussions. As Carol said, the only concern I have is, is that we're in a transition with regard to some of these buildings. But I think, you know, I'd be like, willing to make a motion, Joseph, if it's possible, to proceed to start talking to you folks about contracting, whether we do it through the town or ourselves, or the high school. And we'll learn from that, and we'll learn whether to proceed with other schools in the future, or whatever. But I think it's, it would be worth our while to at least have that as a motion. If anyone wants a second, we can talk about it.
I think Tony had something to say, so we'll let him speak, and then we can go back to your motion, if that's okay.
So, and I think overall, I'd like to be as aggressive as we can be. I think, and I don't know if we can do this in the proper timeframe, there's a couple of questions I have, it'd be great to get data on and get people working together. On this data, one is, on these, the other, all the buildings, what's the likely roof replacement? That's a question I have. And can we, what would it cost? What would be kind of the change if we built that in? So if we know Martha Jones' roof is, you know, going in five years, what would that, how would that change the economics?
Structural P book, I'm gonna try to get a minute. Twenty-two seconds.
Yeah, so I, again, it's data, we should be, if we could work together, hopefully we can get to. I think the other question is, can we have it more data on, if we could take down the panels? Can that be built in the contract, or is that something, you know, what that actual cost would be?
I don't, I, you could, I don't recommend it. The reason why I say it is, don't over insure. You know, you don't know if it's gonna happen.
Okay.
Why pay for it? Because if you do it that way, you're gonna pay for it. And it's not gonna change much, so if we actually do it, it's, it's the same impact. We'll do whatever you want, as a, some, taking my hat off a little bit, I don't like to over insure it, but we can if you want.
Yeah, I just wanna report, I think overall, I mean, I'm very supportive of this, and I think it does send a powerful message to children, to people, particularly the younger children. They go in the school and see solar panels and have kias in school, I think that'd be a great thing to see.
There's a great one we just did at the town hall in Branchery that's really, really cool. It's on that one, I rise, you guys, everyone wants to see what it looks like. And then, it's obviously, it's a wet floor. So the reality is, a teacher can blow it up, bring it to us, and actually, the kids can learn right away.
I have to say that, you know, the presentation has been, I think, reassuring. But I'm concerned, it just feels like a real rush job. That's, that's my concern. If we could go forward with doing something, but maybe get some more information before we sign the contract?
We'll give you as much information as you request, and I can watch stress, look, you know, we're struggling in this situation. There is still an SREC three quarter coming up now. It's just not gonna, you're not gonna save it. So if you decide not to do this, we'll still present to you when we know what program is. But we can assure you, it's, you're not gonna save it.
What do you think we'll say?
I'm not gonna say.
Actually?
It's gonna be material.
I would speculate less. It's really, it's so marketing, no one knows.
A lot of politics is, I get the utilities are fighting it for obvious reasons, like, right? And they're powerful, so, you know, there's only so much, administrations take insurance plans on it.
Okay, can I have a motion, but I, I don't know, I, I know, Charlie, do you think we should go just with the high school?
My motion would be that we proceed to discuss the contract with, you know, that's negotiation. So, to proceed to do the high school panel, do you feel?
Just the high school?
Just the high school, just say.
I would point out by the way, the contract, it's an overall contract, who will add buildings to it as we choose. And it'll be the same PPA, and it's currently, we hired an outside attorney who's an expert on these things.
So, you have a contract already, so we don't have to do this. We don't, you, you can add our buildings later on?
That's right, we can start off with two, and then into the third, fourth, fifth.
And we'll still get the.
The problem you. Well, I mean, if you don't get it in time, you won't get better. I think all Tom is saying is that a generic contract, although useful, is not executed.
Right.
It's been given to you folks, your attorney's reviewing it.
It's very similar to the contract signed by the five of us.
If, if, I don't think the contract's really the issue because it's so generic, I think we could get that done a couple of hours in. I think the real issue is because it's.
Can I just clarify something, back to what Tony said, so, because there's some, clearly some outstanding questions, right? We're not rocketized, but, you know, two questions, and we need to get the answers to them, but. If they, they choose to, let's say, kind of give a blessing, right, in concept, between now and, what, June thirtieth, is there, is there an out if we're not satisfied with the answers to the question?
Tell me what obligates the town.
Like, I, I need to know, like, when and what is the obligation in?
Well, I can speak to that. We don't have, we're saying, we just need a contract signed by June thirty. We can work with you folks over the next couple of weeks, so if you have questions, you can, you can kill it, yeah.
But if we sign a contract on June thirty?
Yep.
Right? On July first, if I decide that I don't wanna, I mean, are we committing to putting solar on school buildings with the contract?
Yeah, so, I think we, we could create, kick me if I'm wrong, because you guys are doing it for us, but I think we'll be probably in a structured contract, or if some reasonable period of time, then we could pay us for our expenses of permitting and so forth to get it out. But at some point in time, it's not only panels.
He's right, we could work that in. We stretch our commercial contracts that way, where, because this is, this is highly unusual for us, so we don't like this any more than you do. We, we've got projects that take two or three years for obvious reasons. We just, we just thought it would be in the best interest to do as much as we possibly could, just to give you the option, if you did want to do the SREC two program, June thirtieth, as crazy as the timeline is. And like you said, there will be an SREC three, and we're just right up the street, we'll definitely be back here for you, if you don't.
There is more to do in the town, just delete time on the equipment, so I talked about the cap overs. I happen to be a big fan of it, and you actually have to see what looks like, it's pretty neat. But there's no way to delete time, there's no way we're gonna get in time.
Disarm the permitting is the.
Can I, Carol, can I just ask the town, Mike and Tom, just, just to be clear, can you just tell me, so I know which buildings we're doing in the town, and are there buildings that are sort of in the future also, so, which would be a similar situation to what we're in, where we'd say, okay, we're doing the high school now? Other buildings, like, can you tell me right now what town, what buildings are we doing?
Well, we will definitely, definitely want to do all these buildings. We still are dependent on the contract to do the structural analysis, to make sure the ones we're looking at are suitable. But we wanted to DPW, we wanted to senior center, we wanted to do the new police station, the new fire station. We wanted to city hall, if we can, and we'll probably look at the Islington Annex down as well.
So when you say we want to, it's all dependent on?
The schools are the biggest.
But it's all dependent upon the structure, so, decided that those are the buildings we wanna do, but it's all dependent on whether the structure is.
And there's no way that really works, I mean, we have, we have some work to do. It doesn't take long, it doesn't take a.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out what.
A lot of those other, so all the other places Tom talked about, I learned what we presented to you today, we have to fall into that.
You have to what?
We have to fall into that next program, and it'd be less, there's just no way we can get.
Right.
Yeah, we'd love to do it, all of them, but there's no way.
You can't do that.
No, I mean, we're even looking at some, some tonneau land, and we do a lot of, a lot of utility scale projects on the barrel land.
So are you saying that we can do that? I feel like we're going in circles, and we need to.
The four sites, was it? The four sites we presented tonight, we believe, if we meet the timeline, we can get installed in time, you won't take that unless we take it. So in order to qualify for the higher descent of the G two hundred, employee a thousand dollars a year.
But can we do it with one, can we just do one building as the end of the?
I'd like to have tomorrow leaves at the office to just look at all the economics, your saving won't be as great.
Right, well, because it's only one building.
Yeah, when you do four, we can reduce our cost, construction out of one, because it's part of the whole.
But you're, we're not trying, why would you one, only do one? Because I'm, I'm, I know the high school, I, I think it's a great project, I do. I, I think this is awesome for the town. I, I'm just worried about people, I don't wanna hear, why are you guys putting solar panels on and making those decisions now, when we don't know what we're doing with the schools?
Well, we know, we're not gonna, Downey and Martha Jones are not in play, and nothing's gonna happen to those schools, right? So the middle school, yeah, I think the middle school maybe we should hold off on, but I don't see why we wouldn't do the Downey and Martha Jones.
So we're okay on the.
But how do you feel, Charlie?
Unless, unless we get it, can we just, but I, I still think it's just an outstanding question. I would like to know, like, the construction, it makes sense, right? What would happen if we need to take it down and put it back on?
Yep.
Right, so, to me, that's a risk, the middle school thing is still many years out anyway, and I'm not trying to, I'm just looking at the other side of it.
Is it, is it a big thing, so, just so we have something to, to come back to your answers to your questions? The big one seems to be, look, guys, if we take it down, what, what do you think the cost impact is to take down and put it back on?
Yeah, I mean, it's just.
Right, and all, what we can do is obviously, we'll give you two thousand, sixteen dollars. You have to build an infrastructure installation depending on what you think that will happen. But that, that's fine, that's no problem.
If you don't, I don't, Tom, Mike, do we, this one you vote for the school committee, if we kind of bless the concept, can we work over the next couple of weeks internally in town to make sure we're comfortable on behalf of the school committee? Is that all you're looking for, is kind of like a, yeah, we like the idea? Or do we need to actually?
So what we actually need.
You have, we may have something concrete.
So what we actually need from the school committee is, within the contract, if there's a small section with a site license, so what we do is we license the real estate, the property, to put our own personal equipment. Because all this solar, by the way, this, I don't know if this is made clear, this is our property. And we're requesting access to, you know, to the site maintenance and operations and stuff, and to physically place our equipment on.
I could probably authorize that.
Exactly, that's, that's the only thing the school board needs.
So we don't need to technically take a vote, so, we can give you our, our.
Right, I would recommend that we will be authorized, superintendent, to sign a contract in the first place.
Okay, that, that seems reasonable.
I have that authority by statute anyway, I mean, but if you want to.
Well, why don't we do that anyway?
The other thing to keep in mind, not that it's a huge impact, but where it's permanent property, we'll be paying property tax on it. It's additional cost.
Great, awesome. Motion on that? Now, can we just move on? You wanna go back, change your motion, or are we, are we, what is the motion?
I, I don't know, Charlie.
The motion I made was to proceed to give us support to do this project, just for the high school at this stage. And also, kind of, we do have to, we're supportive of principle, but we're not really yet deciding what to do with these other schools. But the principal was supportive of the concept, but would like to proceed with all these other further questions that can be answered if they're answered.
So why don't we?
Proceed to the high school.
Why don't we give the superintendent the discretion to work on our behalf, to get the answers to those questions, and then to proceed? If everything works out already, is that okay?
Everything works out, and you think?
Oh, yeah, I, yes, yes, it's June 16th.
I know, I know. But we don't want to shoot ourselves.
We don't have the capacity to do this major analysis, I mean, I, it should've been done a year ago.
Part of the question is, do you have enough information now to make a twenty year decision? And the answer is no, I don't have the contract, I'm a detailed person, I'm a numbers guy as well. You're asking us to make a twenty year decision based on what you presented here, I don't, I don't even know what questions to ask, because I don't know what the contract says.
We have the contract. Right, but talent, that is.
Hi, I'm here.
We, we.
All right, so, wait, so can we, can we agree that we're gonna hopefully get all that information to the school department, okay?
Can you folks give us a list of questions?
And then, yeah.
We can have a more.
Get it to the.
There was a draft, a draft contract that was in their response, and we could have that for tomorrow.
Okay, okay, and then, we'll go from there, we have that motion to give John the authority?
Here's the thing, though, we don't have the capacity or the resources to do the research and the analysis, we need that, Tom, from.
Yeah, that's why we hired, we did hire an outside lawyer that has the experience with solar, and a long history of it, and has worked with a ton of communities. And with Tom Akuskis' blessing, we went outside, and that contract is now, he has, the lawyer has taken copies of their response, our request, and the contract, and he's mentioning all the, you know, what he thinks is right and wrong. The other thing I would suggest, I'm a, I'm such a, if you have a representative in the school comment that would like to, A, talk to existing clients, B, go see some projects, and give us, then we'll give you some great junior more. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
I always like to talk to.
I'd like to revise.
All right, wait a minute, okay, we're getting a motion.
Early motions, we're never seconding themselves. The school committee votes tonight to support the concept of proceeding to do this to the high school, they had an interest in the other place, but we asked the superintendent, to look at it, was if he sees any flags or anything that he's displeased with, that he just gets back to us and let us know. But if he feels comfortable proceeding, if we move on with the town and get that out of this.
That's a heck of a motion.
I would have had a second there, I can't repeat it, but I will second it.
Any further discussions?
So, yeah, I just wanted to make some motion, the motion is, well, is it John's discretion to do zero to four building, is that, I mean, ultimately?
No, his discretion is one, two, it's the high school, and whether he thinks that's a good deal, please know what he learns from here. And if he doesn't like it, he gets back to us and let us know.
Well, there's, so, so there's no mechanism to get back to the committee between now and?
Do we have a second on that motion? Or do we have a new motion? I need a.
No, we're asking you to do it, but.
Yeah, yeah, well, no, but the clarification, though, is one building versus, versus the full project.
No, I'm just proposing one, okay, so that's, that's.
Do I, wait, do I have a second to that? Okay, Carol?
Do you have another motion?
So you're looking to not look at the unbuildings at all?
This is, this is this motion.
This is the second motion.
Yes. It doesn't always run like this, it's a little confusing. I really think the motion should be that we give, I don't wanna limit it to.
They're not done.
Or are you?
No, we're not, we're not seconding it.
Not seconding, no, I'm not seconding it. I'm sorry, I would make the new motion, give John the authority to.
Giving him the authority to work with the team?
Yes, to work with the team, to ensure that, that any questions that we have are answered before we commit. And I leave it to John to determine if this is a project that would be for whether it's one school, two schools, three schools, or four schools, depending on the condition of the schools and what we learn as a result of the information that you're going to bring to us. That's a long motion, but if somebody seconds that, thanks.
Do we have any further discussion?
Did anyone write that down?
So my margin of error is, see if it makes sense to the town, and you authorize me to act on the.
We're authorizing because the bottom line is, is that you all know, I've never been on the roof, I have no idea what, I don't know anything about this. This is your expertise from the school department standpoint, so.
So we can, we can definitely answer those construction questions and what have you, what I cannot provide comfort to, the anxiety or questions about, like this idea of twenty year commitment. So, that is what it is.
That's right. We have to.
And I think we'll have to just try to balance that.
Charles might be of interest to, for us to set up the podiums if we can, for you to beat with some of the other superintendents and see how they can, what problems they have.
So, yes, and let's talk about what we can do, it's June 16th, all right? I mean, we're barely breathing between now and June 30th, so I would just say, we'll try to do it, but it's.
All those in favor of that motion? All those opposed? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. Just a question, just. Thanks for all the time.
Thank you.
No, no, it was great, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Okay.
I'm leaving.
Yeah. Bye bye, thanks for coming. All right, so, so we're gonna move the discussion of day term to the next meeting, because this meeting's going too long. And we're gonna discuss the schedule time, okay? Thank you all.
Again, we have nobody in the room. No, no, Cam, stay.
Oh, yeah.
Cam?
Yeah, Cam.
So at our last committee meeting, the committee asked me to, we were thinking about this issue of high school start times, and I haven't got any information, so. So this is an issue that certainly isn't used a lot.
She can't.
I can't hear you.
Can't hear me, sorry, I'll try to speak up, okay. So this is an issue that is in the news currently, has been in the news for several years, I wouldn't say it's a new issue, but it's certainly something that's on a lot of folks' minds. I have a quick history here of potential start times, so you can see that we have started as late as eight o'clock, that means as far back as I could find any information about. And then the start time of the high school has kind of been creaking earlier and earlier over the last couple of decades. And I think if we look at the dates, we can actually figure out why some of these things happened. So, for instance, this jump here in fall nineteen ninety-five, I think that's clearly related to the Education Reform Act being passed, and the requirement for nine hundred and ninety hours a year, that's related to that. This change that happened at seven thirty-five in two thousand and one, that's related to restructuring the district from K two, three, five schools to K five schools. And then I can tell you that this adjustment to seven twenty-five, our current start time, was clearly related to a budget cycle.
Right.
Where we collapsed the bus runs and saved, as I recall, my recollection is about three hundred and some thousand dollars that year. And. This last little adjustment is because we had a coordinated program with me by Desi, and they told us that we were still a little bit short on nine hundred and ninety hours a year, so I had to add two minutes today to be in compliance, so, that's a short history. So, I would start by saying that, you know, this is one of those issues where the research is completely clear, there's sort of nothing to really debate about the research about adolescents and sleep. So here are the facts, the research is that adolescents need between eight and a half and nine and a quarter hours of sleep each night. That's National Sleep Foundation, you know, A M A, everybody. If we look at the issue nationally, most teens get at least six hours per night, I think I saw a statistic that something like thirty-eight percent of kids actually get the recommended amount of sleep in this country. The biological rhythms of adolescents are different from young kids and adults, and effectively, they're kind of night owls. So, they, they don't really get tired until about eleven P M, that's kind of their natural go to bedtime, and their natural wake up time is, you know, about eight A M. And, you know, I think about how when I was an adolescent, I used to kind of laugh and make fun of my mother who fell asleep on the couch at about eight thirty. And now we get it, but now I get it, so that was hilarious at the time. But, you know, I can see that clearly something changes over the years in terms of sleep patterns. There was one really good big study that the University of Minnesota did recently in twenty fourteen. I, I thought about giving it to you, but it's about seventy-five pages, so I'll give you the quick finding. They found in this study that looked at about nine thousand students across eight schools in different parts of the country, nothing particularly close to here. And that high schools that start at eight thirty or A M or later allow for sixty percent of students to get at least eight hours of sleep. That seems to be the magic time. And then, they also found improved academic performance, measured by things like grades, standardized testing, improved academic performance at schools with a start time of eight thirty-five or later. That was the primary, okay? So, you know, this stuff seems to be the case. Some of the information that I had in your packet also, in addition to improved academic performance, clearly there's lots of research that sort of chronic sleep deprivation impacts somebody's emotional well-being, mental health, right? Not getting enough sleep is clearly related to maybe some depression, anxiety, right? So there's something to be said for sleep in terms of how well we. So, at some level, it seems like a no brainer, and then we sort of start to think about, well, what are all the factors to consider? You know, why don't high schools just start later if it makes so much sense? So, I, I'm throwing some things out here, and I wanna emphasize, you know, we didn't have a group ribbon committee to look at this, this was sort of like me in my office thinking about it, that's a bit. So, here are some things that occurred to me, so, you know, the first is by it, that if we were to decide, for example, to say, let's just move the start time of the high school from seven twenty-five to say eight forty, we would then have to acquire probably fourteen or so, fifteen buses. Right now, our bus schedule is a precision thing, so that we have a fleet of buses that go do all the high school, and then they immediately go do all the school, and then they go do Cameron. So if we wanted to have the high school start later and not affect the times of anything else, we would just have to get a whole bunch more buses and tell us, I mean, fifteen buses, what, eight hundred thousand?
Oh, it's sixty-four, eight pieces.
Okay.
Almost a million dollars.
Almost a million dollars, so, so if you just make that decision, that's what.
So why would you do that, wouldn't you, wouldn't, why wouldn't you change everybody else, Joe?
So we'll get to the other thing.
Sorry.
So that's what we're. That's to say, let's not upset the apple cart or impact anyone else, right?
It's an annual cost, I just wanna clarify, when we say a person, fleet of buses, we're talking pay for buses via contract every year.
Right, same. So then, the other issue that gets raised a lot for high schools is athletics, which drive a lot of things in high schools. So, you know, we're part of a league.
Yeah.
And most of the other schools in our league are in a similar schedule to us, and so our competitions are scheduled, obviously in conjunction with them. If you end up with a later start time and therefore a later end time, something that probably would happen is that that kids would then have to be dismissed from school early in order to go to their competitions, which happens on occasion now, but pretty rarely. And I will tell you from having been in the church, it's pretty darn disruptive when, you know, a quarter of the class ends up in leagues at one thirty. And so those kids end up missing instruction, unless you can somehow get all the other schools in the league to follow suit.
Is Millicent a league?
Yes.
So how are they doing?
Well, so they get out at about two twenty, I think.
Two twenty.
Yeah, so, I would imagine that their kids get dismissed about fifteen or so regularly.
Yeah, a lot of, I mean, a lot of, a lot of them begin at, you know, it depends on the, three thirty, three forty-five, so.
But it also, and it depends on distance, like, you may have, so, it may not be that they're doing it for every competition or.
Sure, if you're playing then, it's one thing, if you're playing more, then it's another.
Right, very.
The A D's work together, you know.
Right, so, you know, there's, it's related to competitions, obviously, if you get out of school later, then the practice is just go later. And, so, you know, there's a change for families, right, it starts impacting things like dinner time. And particularly in the fall, you know, coaches get concerned about lots of daylight, you're sending cross country runners out to run or what have you, so, things that get there. Another factor is childcare, so, you know, your question, Mrs. Jody, about why not flip them, so you could do that, you could say, let's take the elementary schools and put them on the early schedule, start them at seven twenty.
But you know they get up at five anyway.
I do know that. So we could start them at about seven twenty-five, and we could have the high school start at eight, for example. You know, the things that happen there is that people get concerned about childcare, so now, if your elementary age kids are done at two, your afternoon childcare needs to change. Their listening, so, you know, it's a decision we make, but it would have an impact on a lot of people. The bell schedule, just a few thoughts about that, what I noted is that the schools that have kind of been in the news recently about going to later start times tend to have a different bell schedule from us, they tend to be block schedules, and I think the reason for that is you then eliminate passing times by having fewer periods in the day, and you can collect back those minutes, and starting later doesn't make the end time as late. So for example, if we went to a block schedule where we had, I'm saying hypothetically, four periods a day instead of seven, you'd have fewer passing times. You'd probably save twelve minutes, right? You could eliminate homeroom, which we've done on occasion, I have to say, it would not do it in terms of tardiness and getting a period end time, but you could eliminate homeroom, and that would save five minutes and another passing time, and I think you could collect back about twenty minutes by changing the bell schedule. So I suspect that when districts think about changing school start time, they take that opportunity to look at other things as well. Facility use by community, so our buildings, as you know, are community buildings, they're used all the time. And we have groups that are using our gyms regularly, where things are ending at about eleven P M. So, you know, community basketball leagues and whatnot. So obviously, if our, our, our end time is later, then the time the community groups can get in to use the gyms is impacted. And I think, I'm thinking eleven P M is probably the upside when we're playing basketball, so it might restrict availability a bit. Something that, I missed it up here, but, now I've blown it, I'll mention, I was thinking also about our Boston resident students who come in through our Metco program. I, having commuted from the city out here for about twenty years, I don't know that it's possible to get from Boston to here at two thirty. You know, the traffic patterns are such that they benefit from the fact that they leave early, and they get more time, and they're leaving really early. So at some level, I think it'd be great for them to leave later, I just think, I think they'll never get here, yeah. So, just as a frame of reference, I took a look at school hours in tech communities, that's the education cooperative that we belong to and that we frequently compare ourselves to, and you can see that, you know, we're sort of in the thick of things on the early end, certainly. It's interesting to me that only Millicent Needham on this list have made it to eight A M, right? Sort of, we think of eight A M as a threshold of some sort. Everybody else is kind of in that similar range. And I think that the end times, the variations in end times as it relates to nine-ninety must have something to do with the actual schedule itself, right? The blocks, the school. And then, I took a look at some cosmic globe articles and whatnot over the last couple of years. And what I noticed is that there are sort of four schools that have gotten a lot of press that they have been changing to earlier start times. And those four schools were Hingham, Sharon, Duxbury, and Nozett. It was interesting to me that for the press that they got in Sharon, you know, they went to eight-oh-five. I thought, I somehow expected that to be like a lot later based on all of the media attention. And Hingham is at eight. So, I combined those four schools that have been in the media with the two in tech that are eight AM or later. And this is what I found. This goes to the issue of they often have longer blocks. There was only one school that made that eight-thirty-five AM threshold that was set during the last twenty-fourteen study. That's Nozett, which is on the Cape and East End. It's a big regional school district. What's interesting there is that they noted that they have some kids that travel like forty-five minutes to get to school. So, I think that's probably really important for those minutes, like it's later. And finally, I mentioned in the packet that there is one league, and now the name of the league is escaping me, but it's...
Yeah.
The Middlesex League, Burlington, Watertown, Bellon, Winchester.
Not Lexington.
Not Lexington.
We're always in that league. It's not listed, but it used to be.
I don't think there are anymore. But that league, after, I think, you know, a couple of years of process, they have agreed that they will all start between eight and eight-thirty, starting in the fall of twenty-nineteen.
Well, I think you need that much time to prepare, but...
It's a community thing.
Yeah. But I also, have you talked to anybody, any of these districts that have changed, to see what the results are? To see if they've seen any results in this?
Yeah, I mean, well, the changes have been fairly recent in these districts. So, I certainly haven't called around.
I mean, I know it would probably be a tremendous upset to the whole community if we were to do this. And you could, certainly couldn't do it unless it was, you know, a long process, maybe three or four years.
You know, just sort of, it's funny, it wouldn't really be immediate. I mean, to Emily's point, the first point you made is like, moving it is kind of the easy thing. But when you just move it and don't do all the other moving pieces, it's just, it's a financial thing. And the question we would have to ask ourselves is that, is that adding extra buses, is that cost prohibitive?
We're going to save all that money with...
Yeah, 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 yeah. We would still on the buses. Collect sunlight all day.
Yeah. Have the kids...
No, so, I mean, it's, at some point, it's truly a cost benefit.
Yeah.
But it's possible.
So, this is a topic I'm pretty passionate about. I mean, I think a couple of things. One, I think we should need to think about what's right for the kids.
Yeah.
And start with that. And like, look, the research, the research there, like you said, that many, there's a lot of things in education where the research isn't so clear. So, I think it's clear. I think it will be a long process, but I think though, I think this is one of these things, in ten years, no school in the Commonwealth will start at seven-twenty-five. I won't predict that. The AMA just came out yesterday, kind of advocating an eight-thirty start time. The state legislature, they're very likely, you know, to approve a task force to look at this. It's one of these things that I think is gonna, I'd like to get ahead of this and start thinking about what it might mean. And the other thing I'd like to do is think about, can we do like they did in Middlesex and start having those conversations with other neighboring towns? So, again, I think that we're not going to solve it in a minute, but I would be definitely in favor of further pursuit and thinking about how do we at least start having this conversation.
Continue the conversation. The other thing I think is interesting is all the, all of the research shows that it's most beneficial when it's after eight-thirty. They were all starting at eight o'clock. So, I think that we should look at starting as late as we possibly can and still run the system. Because, I mean, if it's not going to be beneficial, there's no sense, you know?
It's going to be a big change for twenty, twenty-five minutes.
I was curious about that, and I was, because I was reading comments about Sharon, and I'll call over and ask.
Yeah.
You know, they went through a very long process to change their start time. And I was curious why they settled on eight-oh-five.
It might have been a compromise because they had such, yeah, yeah, so, I, Charlie.
I think it's very important to look into. I think, thank you for all the work you've done. Very helpful to see this. But I, I don't know if this is possible, but I think it'd be very valuable for us to develop an instrument that could be used by the school community to just survey population, you know? A lot of groups, I don't have to survey monkey, cause nobody, anything, and people are asking questions to say, if we had a seven-twenty-five start, seven-forty, you know, ask people for their feedback. Number two, I'd ask the high school kids, they're pretty mature, what their feelings are. It'd be very valuable to have that feedback.
Noon every other day, right?
But I think it'd be helpful to have a sense of, I think you've done a good job overlearning the problem that may be more out there. And also get a sense of how much of it is a problem. But, I mean, it's valuable to do it, and I don't think there's costly ways to do it.
I would also be very interested to survey the high school students. I mean, I expect that they might say, starting later would be better. I think they probably are also going to raise issues about what time they're up till now in terms of their activities, their practices, their homework. You know, they may say, if I get home later, I'm saved up.
Yeah, that may be, but...
But I think it's definitely...
If you're going to do this, do they get help you?
Right. All kinds of conversations we have.
We have to survey monkey to do that.
I think that's, that's a very good point. But I also think that in, I also want to bring that hockey issue back up at this point too, because if we were to change the times, all right, you certainly wouldn't want the kids to be getting up at four o'clock to do a hockey practice. So, I think it was a good time to look at...
I appreciate, I thank you for reminding me of that. But we did not forget about that. And I went back to MacPhail's after last meeting, and just he's kind of going back to all of our, the rings of the area. There's just not a lot of time. I don't have a firm answer yet about what's built. Ironically, some of the times our bill are later, later at night, right? So, again, there's only, after-school's after-school.
So, is that an all availability issue for sure?
It's partly, it's partly availability. It's partly, it works, it works for our coach. It has for twenty years and, but it's sort of a combination of those two.
But I guess just off this point is if we want, and I agree with my fellow school community members, because I've been passionate about this issue for a long time. I remember when the times changed and, but I also, I see both sides, and I understand the burden. And if we were to survey folks, I think we also have to make them understand too, are you willing to, if we make these changes, what the impact is? Not just, I don't think anyone would say, oh, yeah, I think that high schools should definitely start at seven-twenty-five as an isolated answer. I think we have to understand what, what the consequences are and the changes that are going to occur in our community as a result. As far as, as early morning, and I remember we have other sports that, that start early in the morning, but this does present an issue there too. But if we're going to be, if our mindset is we're concerned about the sleep patterns of our kids, then I think it has to be across the board. You know, we have, we can't just be, for school time, it has to be for any school sanctioned event.
The other thing is, have we talked to the rest of the league to see what they're going to do or have they...
The TBL, so, no, I have not talked to the TBL. So, I will say those tech times, I mean, so there's a lot of overlap between the tech schools and the TBL. There are a couple of schools that are in the TBL that are not in tech, so, Melvin Ham, Morton.
TBL, yeah.
Yeah, TBL.
Is there a way that, I mean, that you're, that everybody's saying...
It's funny, I'm not, sports is a huge factor, it is. But it's, it depends on what time. Eight o'clock is, it wouldn't, wouldn't be a, wouldn't be a big deal. You just be, sometimes you just, you're getting to the game a little later. I mean, you know, and have less warm-up time. Going to like, for example, like thirty-five or, I don't know how you would necessarily do that. But bottom line, there's only so many hours in the day. We all, we all face it. Even practice times, Charlie, you talked about, I mean, you don't want to stress the kids on more by kicking away something that's so...
Oh, I know what you're talking about.
No, 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 I don't mean that, and I know that's what...
Just looking for the best possible, just what's in the best. You go back to Tony's comment, what is in the best interest of the kids?
And if all of the research is showing, every single study that they do says the same thing. It's important. They're not getting enough sleep. And we see these kids, I mean, I read some of these articles, they're getting four and five hours of sleep. How can they punish them and do well in school?
Just don't go to Debbie, don't hit seven, ten, the lineup, go on. So, one other, just, I know we have to run in, another interesting one you might want to talk to is Newton. They began a process last fall. They're going to actually make recommendations, I think, next fall. And they've gone through quite an interesting process. But again, that's one of those ones, if Newton comes out and makes a big change, I think you're going to start seeing an avalanche of law. So, that's another one, because they've booked a pretty interesting process, it's all online, every minute they've done.
I don't think News, I don't think News is big as bellwether as you give credit for. It's, they're just kind of, actually, ironically, they're kind of a unique animal. Abby can speak to the chief to work there.
They'll get some press.
Yeah, they get some press, yeah, yeah. They're going to get impressed, yeah. It's a good point, I think.
Emily, thank you so much for doing that.
Yeah, thank you.
Really great, thank you all. Okay. So, we're going to go into action items.
We're going to defer J-term to...
Yes, that is, didn't they say that? I said that. Is that, oh, would you answer to it? Let's do it, go ahead.
Can I do it fast?
Yeah, yeah. We have something else that Emily has worked hard on.
It is one of my favorites.
Yes, and we all want to hear about it. It's the J-term that she's proposing doing, so...
I will be super appreciative. Okay. So, J-term is an idea that I've been mulling over in my mind for about a year. Got afraid and started talking about it last spring. Have talked to each of you individually a little bit, and I will get into what it is in a second, but I just wanted to put this up here. This is a continuum that this psychologist collected as. And I think that this is the continuum that educators are always thinking about. It is where students and teachers live, right? So, the holy grail, the bold standard, is that we have learners who are authentically engaged and willing, like, for real, invested. We have kids all the way on the other end who are actively not buying what we're selling, right? The ones who are sort of retreating, the sort of shut down. We spend a lot of time thinking about them too, and how to sort of move them up the continuum. I think that if we're honest, we would acknowledge that most of our kids, not just in Westwood, right? I'm saying in schools, sort of live here in strategic compliance. And we've all been students, so I think we know that, right?
Yeah.
That there, we can think of times that we've been engaged authentically, and then we can think of times where if we wanted to be successful, so we did all the things that were asked of us, right? Okay? And as teachers, that's a puzzling problem and also a really interesting challenge to think about how to move everybody to the top. Okay? So, that, I provide that as context, because that's what I think about later next, okay? So, that's related to J-term. So, what is it or what could it be? So, J-term, the idea is that you have a block of time where students take one course that they've chosen, and they just take that one course all day, every day. And for the purpose of Westwood High School, I was thinking that it might be, say, five days. Five days all day, every day, the instructional time is the equivalent of one quarter of going forty-seven minutes a day. So, it's actually a pretty significant period of time in terms of instruction. But the idea is that it's a different structure. So, it's an intensive, immersive, valuable learning experience, and the idea is that you go for authentic education. So, the kind of curriculum, the kind of instruction that you design for these courses is hands-on, it's plugged, it's active, it's creative. You can't design a course in that format where it gives it and this. I think it could be one of two things. I think it could be an opportunity for students to make a deep dive into something that you're, who's really interested in, right? There are kids who just, you know, love engineering. They could do something in engineering for a week, something they're passionate about. On the other hand, I think it could be an opportunity for a student to push out of his or her comfort zone and try something new. The courses would have credit, but they would be pass fail on purpose. We would make them pass fail to say, try something. I have no idea if I am good at computer science or not. I don't know. And I think in high school, I might have said, I'm afraid to destroy my GPA and wouldn't have taken that elective. I also think I might have been afraid to commit to something for a year in case I didn't like it. But I think I would have given it a shot for a week if it were pass fail. And that could have changed something, I don't know, right? So, maybe an opportunity to push out of their comfort zone. And it's an opportunity to create a different kind of learning experience that is not possible in forty-seven-minute chunks. I did the Shadow of Student Challenge a couple of months ago. I spent the whole day with high school students. The bell just keeps ringing. I mean, you've barely gotten into something, and it is time to pack up. And I seem to be the person who is most bothered by it, because the kids are so used to it that it's like, all right, we talked about Booker T. Washington and Du Bois, click, now we're talking about math. And that concerns me because that suggests that's not authentic engagement to me, that it was like, check, history's done, let's move on to math, right? So, a different kind of experience. And I think there are things like, you know, Spanish version that you could do in a week that you can't do in forty-seven minutes, okay? It could be an opportunity for interdisciplinary learning. Mrs. Jowdy knows, we've been talking about that for, let's say, twenty years. And we don't have the structure at the high school to allow us to create interdisciplinary courses. This is a way to do it. It could be an opportunity to get off campus, to bring in speakers, to bring in offer residents for a writing course or whatever. I believe that it will be a valuable professional learning experience for teachers, because we would design professional development around the creation and the curriculum. And I think that experience of working collaboratively on that design and getting each other's ideas would give us an opportunity to get at some important things that would transcend J-term, that would translate back into our current curriculum. It would be an opportunity for students to experience more electives during high school. We probably would do this in June after seniors' week. So, it would be three electives over the course of your high school career. And I know that, that would give them more choice and more exploration, something we've talked about. And I think it would be something that would make a Westwood High School students' transfer different. That wouldn't be the reason for me to do it, but I think it's a nice bonus. I did have Mrs. Metzer, our director of guidance, send out inquiries to, you know, seven to ten college admissions officers to say, here's an idea. What do you think? They all said it sounded great, like a unique thing, good fodder for college application essays. All they said was, just make sure in your school profile you explain to us what it is.
And that the course itself is substituted, right?
Okay, right. I think of these potential courses in three buckets. The first is that we'd be making sort of menu of options, right? The first would be courses that are preparation for college and career, sort of the deep dive, right? For kids who love math, they're never going to take discrete math at the high school, but they could here. It could be courses that I think of as preparation for life, an opportunity to do something real world that we can't offer right now. You know, how we invest, how cars work. I really wanted to take that course in high school, but didn't, right? So, I think that could be interesting. Or, you know, preparation for nothing. So, something that broadens your horizons, enriches your experience in the world. There are lots of things that for some people would be preparation for college and career, that for other people would be preparation for nothing, but really interesting learning experiences nonetheless, right? And no matter what you're learning about, we would be working on particular skills that are transferable to opportunities. This is a very private school model. There are lots of private high schools that do this. I just randomly selected the titles of some of the courses that I saw in private high schools. Hard to find a public high school that does it. Though since I've started talking about it, somebody told me in conversation that Weston is starting to work on this too.
Of course. Give following, yes.
I, right, that's what it is. Personally, this course, History of the World, went on well. I really want to take that. I don't know what it is. Obviously, it's a very collegiate model too, right? Lots of colleges too. So, you know, that's sort of the big picture idea. There are so many questions and issues to be decided and problems to be solved, and we've just started talking. J-term comes about because usually it's January, it's sort of the middle of the year break, or June at the end. And initial conversations with the faculty, I would say a lot of them for January, but they clearly weren't June. So, it probably would be, not the last week, but probably after MPAS is over, AP is over.
A lot of that had to do also with the weather, like the opportunity, the opportunity is to be outside, travel.
Do some environmental science or whatever, yeah. So, probably June, you know. Where does the time come from? You've got to somehow find five days. I think there are lots of ways to do it. So, I want to say this really clearly. I am not advocating... So I wanna say this really clearly, I am not advocating switching, you know, exchanging J-term for exams, so I don't wanna be quoted, 'cause I said that.
We have already heard that rumor something.
I know, the rumor's out there, so that's not what I'm saying. What I am saying is that I think it is perhaps time to look at how we scheduled exams. Our current mid-year final exam schedule is done that way for, you know, thirty, forty years, and it is not reflective, I think, of the reality of the kind of assessments that we're doing now. It's also just inefficiently structured, we do it by block, instead of by department, so there are these exam blocks, the kids don't actually have classes during those blocks. So at any rate, I think we could collect some time there, and by the way, you know, there are many schools that have decided not to have mid-year exam periods, Wellsley, Liedem, Holliston, Lexington, to no apparent detriment to their outcomes. So an interesting discussion. You know, what would the design process be? How would you get student input? How would you select courses? All of these things, we'd have to talk about budget.
How do, so, would the, would the courses already, would, do you buy a curriculum? Or you would develop all?
No, we would develop them, which is part of the PD, that's part of the plan. So it has to do with working with teachers around design, and that's actually a really important piece of my professional development goals and strategy. So I will say the budget, I mean, obviously there's some costs in terms of salary or anything like that. And I do think in the age of online resources, there's not gonna be a lot of material costs either, but that would be part of the design and course proposal process, we have to think of that, you know. Clearly, when I say to teachers, what would you like to design, they have no trouble thinking of the most glorious thing, we have to think about what's, you know, what we can do. So, so many questions. So far, you know, I think I've said this out loud to the superintendent and to Sean Bevan sometime last summer, then met with the department chairs, based on sort of their enthusiasm for the idea, I had about twenty individual conversations with teachers across departments, where I said to them, your job right now is to, you know, kill my dream, tell me all the things that are wrong, so I can understand that. Those actually were really interesting conversations, and great. And based on that, we had one, two-hour initial faculty discussion, where we forced ourselves to examine it from all sides, and at the end of the meeting, I asked people to submit where they were on the issue, and I was, I will tell you that I was ready to fully retreat, right? If people said they weren't interested, because clearly it's dependent on the teacher's mind, right? And yet, in total, we had about ninety percent saying either, we can stop talking, I'm ready to do it, to, I'm feeling positive about it, that needs a little more discussion before greenlighting it, and that's, I never read that either. Anything, actually. So you can see there, I had one person say, I'm not interested, don't wanna talk anymore, one person skeptical, and five people just, they're kind of on the edge. So that's sort of where we landed, and what I would like to do, and this is kind of, is I would like to form a planning committee to do these things, to discuss and address sort of all these initial questions that have come up, to get some input from students and parents, and then to define a possible timeline with phases, and I wanna thank Mr. Bevan, we had an interesting conversation about how to sort of phase it, so that we could assess the viability at the end of each phase and decide if we still are going forward, or we wanna.
So do you want our blessing, is that what you're asking?
All I wanna know, before I get fifteen teachers to be on the committee, right? And get everybody all excited, is that there is some support for the idea of forming the committee and thinking about it, 'cause I would hate to, yeah.
I was, I was gonna ask you each of you, so, way, and Tony?
I think it's great, I mean, I think it seems exciting, I don't know, go for it.
Charlie?
Thanks again, Emily, for your innovation and your creativity. Last time I heard about this was the Student Defense Study Board, who came out of just innovation and creativity. So number one, I think it's fantastic, what you're suggesting could be a wonderful experience for many of these kids. I, I do think, you know, with all of the things you've outlined, there's quite creative work needs to be done. I do think a pilot of some kind, where one works out bugs, and it could be a limited number of courses, open to the first kids who apply, I mean, some way of controlling it, and then learning from that experience, also asking for innovation from teachers and the kids of what topics and career, so, but I, I would just, I think you need to move on to the planning and try it out, but I do suggest a pilot that has limits, so you're, you're really, you're usually gonna learn. So the kids being asked to do it, you're helping us develop something, we're not trying to, and then eventually it's, how many can we do, et cetera. But I think it's a wonderful idea, what the private schools have figured out, what other schools have figured out, I mean, all these topics, would be, I think, a wonderful opportunity for kids, and then the next problem you're gonna have is the school committee wants to get on the courses, and the parents wanna come in and say, I'm all doing a night program for us, so, but I strongly encourage you to proceed.
You know mine, we talked about this, and, and, so you had me on J-term.
I think it's a great idea. Thank you so much for all the hard work. And I like that idea of pilot, and I think that's a good idea.
Great work.
Yeah, great, thanks a lot. Okay.
By the way, she did mention to us a little more than one. Kinda kept on digging, persevering.
Okay, so we are going to action items. We have an out-of-state trip to China.
Yeah, so you've actually heard about this sort of length over the last year, so, but this is, you have the formal proposal for our Western High School students going over to China next April, as part of a, the second, how do you say that, the second stage of an exchange program.
Right.
So you kinda gave us like a blessing, and then, but this, I'm asking for a formal vote for this particular proposal.
Can I have a motion? I'll make that motion. May I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? For, okay.
Just one question, I'm always concerned about the kid that would love to go, and, you know, three thousand bucks, they got, and I know Sean has come up with three ways in the past to, you know, people would make, you know, or even to the company doing it, if scholarships are available, so, I mean, whatever could be done in that area, 'cause you'd hate to have a kid who would love to go, and, you know, there's no way they're gonna be able to come up with something, and if there's a way to find out who the kids who wanna go would benefit, and see if we could privately get some support or something.
Thank you, John, it's a great point, it makes me worry.
Okay, and then we have non-bargaining unit salary increases.
Yes, so every year, we, actually, we just had a hand, really a handful of employees in the district who either aren't in, aren't covered in collective bargaining agreements, or aren't, or don't have an individual contract. And so, again, it's a, it's a, it's a small handful of employees, and because of, because of that, I, I need to ask the school committee to approve their salary, 'cause on annual basis, 'cause there's no other structure to do that.
May, may I have a motion to do that, please?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Tony. May I have a second, please? Do we have any discussion? All those in favor?
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, and also, the next thing is the approval, the third reading, which we will, we just, we won't do there, of the new domestic violence leave policy.
Right, our, our policy on policy adoption requires three, three readings, the third being the approval. We brought this before you in April, in May, and tonight I'm asking for official approval of this domestic violence leave policy that's prompted by new state law.
Motion? Second? All those, discussion? All those in favor? Okay, and then we have the teacher's contract, which we need a vote to ratify. So may I have a motion to ratify the new teacher's contract?
I'll make that motion to ratify the new teacher's contract.
Okay, do I have a second? All those in favor?
Can I take a quick comment, just for the record? And I said this to, to you privately, but this, you know, I think unions sometimes get a bad rap. The Western Teachers Association is an incredible bunch of professionals, they teach our kids every day, and, you know, I just really can't say enough good things about the quality of our teachers, but specifically about the quality of our union. Just, just rounding negotiations with the best I've ever been part of in my entire career, it was the most collaborative, collegial, enjoyable is too strong of a word, but I have to just give a ton of credit to the Western Teachers Association and their, and their team, and I'll personally thank them too, but I just wanna make that point. I will say it is a unique experience in Westwood, it does not happen everywhere else, so I just wanted to say that publicly.
I'll second that. They were, they were.
Yeah, just for fairness.
I'd like to make a motion, as a school committee, that we ask the superintendent formally thank all the teachers for the superb job they do as well, and it's really, you know, we thank them up, you know, much we appreciate, you know, all the work they've done for us.
On behalf of the school committee, that's very nice.
Absolutely.
Second, Claire? Okay, all those in favor?
Great.
Okay, and then finally, the approval of the May nineteenth minutes? Were there any corrections? Okay, may I have a motion to accept those?
May I have a motion to accept those?
Second, discussion? All those in favor? Okay, now we have, oh, new business. Is there any new business? I thought it was part of the presentation. You know, I'd like to go back to something Charlie asked for several meetings ago, about the survey that, that you had suggested, and did we get on?
We'll try to cut to it, we will, in the summer we'll try to, basically.
Okay, okay, Carol, you have something? Are we gonna get the college list?
We'd just wanna share that with you.
Yeah. We should do, we usually do that this time?
We just didn't have time in the agenda.
Oh, no, I know.
We usually get it after students.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. We'll distribute it.
Pavel, participation?
One other new business, in the fall, I'd like to, I saw the survey results that were sent around, I'd love to get an update in the fall on.
Drug and alcohol.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, in the fall.
Good idea. Okay, Mrs. Delisle, would you please identify yourself?
Barb Delisle, ninety-sixth Skyline Drive, on FinCon. Could you actually tell us what the teacher's contract is?
Oh, sorry, what, well, what?
Well, just the, just the, just the numbers.
Two, two, two.
And it's for, so it's for three years?
Three-year contract, yeah.
Okay, it's just an even two, two, two. Thank you very much.
Sorry, yeah.
Good job.
Yes, Polly.
Polly Attridge, thirty-six Kingswood Road. If you change the times, the teachers are cool with that?
We don't know yet.
So you can't even go before them and ask them based on their contracts if you wanna start changing?
Oh, well, we, we, this is what we were talking, should I be answering? No, no, no. So it would be something that we would, it would probably be a three-year, a four-year decision, it's gonna be a long process, and so we would, that would be part of it, going to the teachers and seeing, you know, what they thought.
I was kinda curious if, if Emily had extended to them.
Oh, we, no, we haven't done anything, but we, we could is a short answer, but we wouldn't do anything, obviously.
Well, I'm just saying.
They're one of the biggest stakeholders, so.
Right, I was just saying, it would save you a lot of time and effort and continued research if, you know, what they thought, what their buy-in was with it.
Right.
Alan Endersky? Oh, hi. Hi, I have two questions, one on the solar, they said they predict, project a hundred and forty-two thousand, what if it only comes in at seventy-two thousand savings? You, I mean, is there anything, I know you haven't seen the contract yet, but do they guarantee that hundred and forty-two thousand? 'Cause that was just a figure they threw out, but.
I, I, that's a question, a question we'll ask them, I don't think they'll guarantee that.
Right, so you'd have to check with other.
What they guarantee is just a difference, thirty-four hours you generate, you get fifteen cents.
Oh, they can guarantee.
So they, so they do guarantee?
No, they, well, they, they don't guarantee, they guarantee fifteen cents is guaranteed, but.
Well, how do they come up with a hundred and forty-two thousand, then?
They base it on the fact that in New England, you know, you get approximately fifteen percent, well, in fact, on a, on average, on a panelist, so that if you put a vague one up, you get about fifteen, twenty hours, approximately fifteen percent of times you're generating benefits, and they just base it on the average of the whole state.
If they use less electricity.
Right, right, yes, right. And just to follow up, I'm, obviously, I have been in touch with the school committee about this sleep deprivation, and I'm fairly passionate about it, and I think Mr. Hale mentioned the AMA, and I think they sent you guys articles about the CDC is, is really behind this proposal of starting school times later. I think, I think as Ms. Park said, the less sleep kids get, it increases sexual activity, marijuana use, I mean, there's a whole host of things that I think the research has shown, so, you know, I'm glad the school committee's looking at it, and I, I know it's not gonna happen in a year, but I would hope it would be shorter than a three- to four-year process. Obviously, I think what Dr. Antonucci said was, you can't, obviously you can't switch, just make us, you know, switch the time without switching some of the other schools, 'cause it wouldn't be possible budget-wise, so, and I think as Ms. Chowdys said, you know, that the elementary school kids are up at five o'clock, but, you know, I hope there's a, you know, further discussion, and I think it's a really important issue for the kids, 'cause it is, I think it's a mission, it's all about the kids, and so, but I'm glad the school committee's looking into it.
Thank you for coming. I'm sorry, it's gonna be a, oh, I'm sorry.
Carolyn Ashman, twenty-sixth Carol's Drive, feel like a broken record sometimes, but we still live in Texas, and we had the swap start times when we were there, so my younger kids wouldn't, you know, they'd get up and bounce off to school at like seven AM, and the older ones would go at eight-thirty, and it was great, it was really, really great. There were no, I mean, they, they definitely got more sleep than they get now, and the young one, the young ones, I got more time with them, 'cause it was actually kinda nice in the afternoon, so I liked it a lot.
Christine Maiten, twenty-three Brookfield Road, I just wanna say also in support of the later start time for the high school, I feel like that's a no-brainer. All the data supports it, and like, the number one thing in this town is the schools, and the high school getting kids into good colleges, so I think whatever we need to do to make that happen is worth it, even if it means paying for extra classes. I'm curious, even since lack of sleep does impact a lot of mental health issues, if there's any correlation yet on what kind of savings we might find on mental health issues, if the kids could go to bed later. And then with the concern about, they're already saying, oh, I'm staying up late already, now I'm gonna have to stay up two hours later. Maybe they're gonna be more efficient in that time, 'cause they've actually slept, so instead of trying to function on four hours and ragging through their day, they've gotten a solid night's sleep, and they're productive, and I bet it would be a lot easier for teachers too, to have alert students, so I think in every way, this is a no-brainer.
I second that.
Well, I thank you all for coming, and I will, I'm just saying a motion to. I'll make that motion. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you, guys.